Okay, so the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting for April 8th is now convened. Pam, would you like to call the roll?
Commissioner Platt?
Yes, here.
Thank you. Commissioner Gambetti?
Here.
Mr. Morlan Kapuya?
Here.
And Commissioner Myers?
Here.
Herr Cruz?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll start with Commissioner reports then. Would anyone like to go first? Does anyone have anything, first of all?
Nothing to report.
Okay.
Nothing to report.
You have lots to report, right, but nothing, nothing relevant. Okay.
Been on the Economic Impact Committees. Been on two, one of the subcommittees and then the with the Equity Lens Committee was met today. So we've, we've been pretty busy making sure that the rollouts are happening.
Great, thank you, Willie. I should note, I've been on the Task Force Committee meetings with Kimberly as well, so. Very. Hello?
No, I just, I just think of note, I should say that I've still continued to work every day and seeing an average of 10 to 12 patients a day, so I'm actually still working, so I feel like that's important to report.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, same here, still, still working for clients, so it's a busy, busy time. All right, anything else? Any other Commissioner reports? Okay. Executive Director Branham?
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz and Commissioners. It's been a, in the past month, our entire staff has mobilized around the goal of serving the city during an unprecedented economic crisis for which there is no established guidebook. Unlike with the Great Recession where we could see the impact slowly taking hold, this crisis has seemingly come upon us overnight. So in response, your team has worked with partners to identify ways to support the residents and businesses of Portland, and we've been working to implement those ideas and solutions. We reached out early and often to peer cities around the country to learn from their experiences. We've identified resources to support 31 businesses in the Jade District and Old Town. Businesses that were among the first to feel the impact of the pandemic. With support from Mayor Wheeler and City Council, we stood up a task force and then created and launched an equity-centered grant program as a stopgap measure some of the most vulnerable businesses until additional resources become available from our federal and state partners. And we've done this without being able to sit in the same room. We've engaged in this work with the support of incredible community, business, and public partners. And along with these partners, we remain resolute in our commitment to this work and the city. So I want to acknowledge as well that despite all of this hard work, more than 8,500 small businesses received news late yesterday that they wouldn't receive funding through the initial round of the Small Business Relief Fund Grant. This news was gut-wrenching to deliver and no doubt even more disappointing to receive. This reality remains front and center for us as we announce the Small Business Relief Fund Loan Program, which opened at 9:00 AM this morning. Like the grant fund, we anticipate receiving a request for loan funds that will far exceed the $1 million in available resources. So we will continue to pursue additional state, federal, and private funds to augment the grant resources, and we will continue to work with our external partners to identify ways to support local businesses at this critical time. When we think about how we've completed the work that we've done over the past few weeks and how we'll face the work that lies ahead of us, I realize it really aligns with the values that guide us. To love Portland, make a difference, do excellent work, build partnerships, advance equity, honor the public trust, and innovate. So I just want to appreciate the exceptional work of the entire team at Prosper Portland over the past few weeks. I'm really honored to work alongside all of you and them at this historic time. Thanks.
Great, thank you. All right, so next up, we have meeting minutes for March 11, 2020, and March 26, 2020. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Great, thanks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Minutes are approved. Okay, I don't know if we have public comment or have capacity for public comment.
Chair Cruz, this is Justin Douglas. I had emailed you a, some language that you could read about folks who are interested in providing. Would you like me to read it for you?
Sure, I don't, I didn't receive it, so that would be great.
If the public can provide public comments to the Board of Commissioners by sending an email to the following email address: F E I G E N B U T Z P at prosperportland.us. That email address is also listed on the agenda that is posted on the Prosper Portland website. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Justin. Okay. The first regular agenda item is Item 6. It's an action item, adopting revised Portland Small Business Relief Fund Program Guidelines. And Amy Nagy will present. Amy, are you on?
Yes, hello, everybody. Good afternoon.
Hello there.
Um, just by way of introduction, my name is Amy Nagy. I'm the Project Manager for the Portland Small Business Relief Fund here at Prosper Portland. As we mentioned just about two weeks ago, on March 26, the board actions to create the Portland Small Business Relief Fund, which will provide grants and loans to small businesses who have been impacted by the public health and safety requirements put in place in response to COVID-19. In those actions, the board approved both program guidelines for the fund and also authorized for Portland to accept resources from both public and private granters or donors of up to an additional $500,000. Two weeks ago, as, as Director Branham was just kind of referring to, it means something very different, I think, in the age of COVID. As you know, the city and Prosper Portland have been working tirelessly to implement the fund and have since opened application, and we just launched a loan application again this morning. I will provide a little bit more detail about that in a few moments, but I'm here today to review for your consideration and approval of some amendments to those program guidelines for the fund and also to share some of those initial results from the relief fund grant awards. So since initial approval and the launch of the grant application, we've identified as staff a few revisions to the guidelines. Selection and dispersment process for the loan program, clarifying eligible businesses, and extending the loan terms to acknowledge the one-year deferred payments. So going to the second slide. So as just a quick reminder, here's the summary of the application criteria for businesses that are seeking grants for the relief fund. Both the grant and loan share eligibility requirements that include me being a public-facing business that was impacted by the health requirements and/or having experienced a 25% or more decline in their revenue since February 1st of this year. Businesses must also be operating within the Portland City limits since July 1st of 2019, and the business must also be the owner's primary source of income. All applicants will need to have 50 or fewer employees to be eligible. We also established revenue caps under both business lines in order to ensure that we're serving the small business community that you see here. So moving to that third slide. In addition to the eligibility requirements, Prosper Portland, in partnership with the City Council Commissioners, established equity and vulnerability priorities to ensure our city and agencies' collective commitment to supporting businesses and communities of color was a lens in the award process, as well as considerations for businesses where the resources will help them stay in business, continue to feed their employees, and/or provide healthcare benefits during that, during our crisis. And going to the fourth slide. The Prosper have been working closely to make public funds available for this effort, as well as partnering with those in the private sector, including the Oregon Community Foundation and our banking community, to coordinate several of those private things who have contributed approximately $330,000 additional dollars that will be also awarded to small businesses via the grants. In the first tranche, which is the, the public funds, Portland City Council provided $1 million for the grant line, and Prosper Portland allocated $1 million for the Enterprise Zone Fund for the loans. We established maximum amount to ensure that we could serve as many businesses as possible while still having an impact and setting goals for the number of the businesses served through each of those. So over 150 through the grants, which we, which we exceeded and are thrilled about, and over 50 for the loans, which we will, we will know momentarily by the end of next week. And moving to the next slide. We had also identified a series of eligible uses for the grant funds that were informed both in our, by our discussions with our peer cities and their experiences today, as well as hearing directly from the small businesses on the types of uses. So those were from payroll, inventory management, assistance to make rent and lease payments, commercial mortgage, et cetera. Essentially, the ineligible uses are anything that would go to a personal use, as well as fund operations that are outside of the city of Portland. So going to the next slide here. For the, for the loan segment, in addition to the shared programmatic priorities that I had just mentioned above, we also developed some other equity and priority goals that were, that we use today in our business and industry cluster work to ensure that companies with higher percentages of ownership by people of color, those with employees of color, and businesses that provide quality jobs or located in underserved committee communities were also addressed through these grant and loan-making decision processes. Going to the next slide. And here's just the summary of the eligible uses and terms for the loan program. One note that you'll see is that we have clarified the terms on the loan. So we are offering a 0% loan with a 12-month deferment period, meaning that businesses wouldn't have to start making their loan payments until that second year. After that, companies would have either an additional three or five years to fully pay back the loan, so, which brings that really to a four- or six-year total term. You'll see that on the next slide. It's really just more of a clarification purpose. And so for the next slide. That I bring forward for your consideration today. So in terms of business eligibility, we clarified that the ineligible businesses list, we have limited to landlords and nonprofits. Local friend, local and national franchises are now eligible for funding. And while we continue to prioritize the local vulnerable businesses, we have actually learned through the process that some of the locally owned franchises are experiencing challenges in line with other small businesses. And so we remain focused on the equity impact and outcomes, but don't want to make any blanket determinations to exclude these businesses from eligibility. We also removed from the ineligible list the businesses owned by individuals who qualify for unemployment benefits based on those revised CARES guidelines that have come out since opening that grant application. The loan terms, we just, we just reviewed. And then when the board initially approved these guidelines a couple of weeks ago, we were really focused on rolling out the grant program first that we had heard from businesses, industry partners, that we really needed to act quickly and prioritize getting the grants out the door. We have now updated the timeline for the loans. And so as Director Branham mentioned, we, the application for the loans officially opened this morning at 9:00 AM. It is already a robust response. We will be closing the application period this Saturday, April 11th at noon, and work on the selection process and advance applicants to the underwriting process by April 15th, with dispersment beginning by the week of April 22nd. And then going to the next slide. I did want to share with you some of the results from our relief grant awards that we know today, which is, we're so excited about. Just as a reminder, this was from the initial $1 million that was provided by City Council, knowing again that the need would far exceed the resources. And it was something, you know, it was in our early learnings from those peer city discussions, from our assumptions around our local need. It was all affirmed. We received 8,777 eligible applications that, for $1 million. It translated into 210 grant awards. The grants were divided into different funding levels, so you can see here on the left, those grant amounts and the number of businesses that were awarded. So for example, we awarded $2,500 each to 100 businesses that are community-serving with a single employee, many of which had furloughed workers that the owner helps to reemploy. So these are businesses like childcare and preschool providers to health and wellness service providers, local food carts, consumer product makers, coffee houses. All of those businesses that are essential to the fabric of our community. The 70 businesses will receive a $5,000 grant, and 40 will receive the maximum grant of $10,000. These funds are supporting larger businesses where the funding can have even a greater ripple effect. So poor businesses that are taking some extraordinary measures to support their employees. One business noted that they were actually using personal funds to provide food to their employees. Another has kept their employees on payroll and then also provided personal protection equipment at their own expense to keep their employees safe. I also wanted to note that before the relief fund was established, Prosper Portland had provided $40,000 to the Asian Pacific American Network of Oregon, also referred to as APONU. And that was to provide grants to small businesses in the Jade District, the Asian Pacific Islander Community, as well as Old Town Chinatown. They prioritized disadvantaged communities who were feeling those initial impacts, that kind of first wave of COVID-19. It was almost, it's kind of a precursor to the relief fund. So those grant dollars have now been announced. 31 businesses within the Jade District and Old Town Chinatown will receive those funds. So when we look at a kind of combined on the grant dollars through APONU, 90% of the grant dollars are going to businesses owned by people of color. 61% of the total dollars are to women-owned businesses. So we feel like we really lived our values through this process and are really happy with the outcomes, knowing that there are businesses also that fit that lens that we weren't able to support yet. So there's absolutely acknowledgement of while we're doing, having some great work and great results, there are others that still need to receive support. I also wanted to mention through that work with the Oregon Community Foundation and our, the local banks that are pooling the funds, there is an additional $330,000 that will be kind of a second wave of funds for businesses that are using, that we use the same lens for, the criteria lens and equity lens. They've been notified of their awards. They're just on a slightly different timeline. So we've announced this kind of first round with the 210, and then the second round will be receiving funds in mid-April. And then also, just a reminder, I'd be remiss. We have partnered with three entities with community, community founded, credit foundations to disperse the funds with knowing that one of their core principles was to be able to get this money out quickly. And so partners, including MISO and Craft 3 and Mercy Core Northwest, will disperse the funds on our behalf to the 210 businesses, as well as the additional funds through the Oregon Community Foundation. Moving forward to the next slide. I did want to spend a few moments on the selection process before moving to kind of the, the next steps in our efforts and then also opening it up to any questions that you all may have. So here's a map that's showing the geographical distribution of grantees. 50% of the, I think it's a little over 50%, actually, of the grant funds will go to businesses that are located in North Northeast Portland, as well as East Portland, with the remaining being distributed throughout the city. We had a review committee that undertook the selection process over the course of four very long days. The committee members included internal Prosper staff, staff representatives from three city commissioners' offices, so from Commissioner Hardesty, Udaley, and the mayor's office, as well as three members of our, from our Council for Economic and Racial Equity. The process was really driven by this kind of clear recognition that Black, Indigenous, and people of color communities, individuals with disabilities, as well as those that are experiencing high poverty rate, are disproportionately affected by an economic crisis. And there was a strong desire amongst the committee not to exacerbate the inequities through this process. So they had focused both on a racial equity and an economic relief lens, using their priorities that were established by City Council, so around employee support, business stability, the impact of dollars, the use of dollars, and then expanded that kind of diverse representation into a final list and applying that equity lens in prioritizing demographics, intersectional identities, including LBG, QT, disabled veterans, geography, industry, just so many factors went into this and was taken with a lot of time and care. The committee was also, I want to kind of emphasize, was really mindful of giving the attention to East Portland, particularly where the incomes and the access to resources traditionally lag behind the rest. So the knowledge gain from other cities did allow us, I think, to be more decisive and responsive and thoughtful in our approach. So we're thankful to them for, for going first. But I assure you that even with all of these learnings, it was a challenging process, and we don't anticipate the loan review and selection to be kind of follow suit on that. So for the next slide, in terms of next steps, we continue to partner with our, our public and private entities, as Director Branham mentioned, to raise even more funds to support and distribute to small businesses. We have our awards now. All of our grantees have been notified about their grant awards, and our partners are working diligently right now in order to get those funds to them. In terms of the loan, we have opened that. The window, as I mentioned, will close on Saturday. And then those loan applicants will be, will be notified the following week, as well as trying to get those dispersments out quickly. So with that, I'm happy to answer any, any questions you may have about this. Thoughts?
Well, I would just start by saying, great work. This is all under a very compressed timeframe, and you guys have done a tremendous job. Sifting through all of those applications is really impressive, too. So thanks for the tremendous work. Could you just comment on the ineligible businesses? You mentioned landlord businesses and nonprofits. And I think in our briefing session, you mentioned there were other resources available for nonprofits, and I thought we should just put that on the record.
That's right. Thank you for bringing that up. So the landlord's piece is really just a clarification that this is not for property owners. And there was a little bit of confusion because we did have some property management companies who don't own the land, but, but their business is taking care of properties, and obviously it's been greatly impacted. So we just created that clarification for them. For the nonprofits, the Oregon Community Foundation, I know, has been growing and a fund to support them as well. Given our, right now, given kind of the scant resources that we had and our focus on small business, that we decided to, to focus those right now on small businesses.
Great. Other comments or questions?
This is Francesca. I, I want to just echo the thank you. I, I just can't even fathom the immense effort that it took to get through over 8,000 applications in a weekend, so thank you. I, um, obviously, I think we're all remiss that there isn't more funds available, given the incredible need. There are some federal programs, and we've talked about this over the week, over the past week or two. But I think it's important to, to talk about, and in case anyone's watching this, just the, the federal programs that are being rolled out. And there's some significant opportunities there for, for a number of these businesses through the CARE Act and programs like the Paycheck Protection Program. And I just was wondering if you could speak a little bit to that. And particularly, I just think there's some barriers there for probably a lot of these businesses to access those funds as well. And I'm wondering if we're helping navigate, helping them navigate or partnering with other agencies that are helping, helping these small businesses navigate those opportunities as well.
Sure, so I'm, I'm happy to start. And then I guess, Kimberly, if you want to add anything, please feel free to jump in. So thank you for bringing that up. A couple of, a couple of items. One is that some of the, the federal programs are also available to the nonprofits, so we encourage folks to apply to those. We have, as in Prosper Portland, have put all of the links to the SBA programs on our website. So if folks want to go to Prosper Portland's main website, and there's information there on kind of COVID response. And so it's got not only the Small Business Relief Fund information, but then also is a portal over into the SBA. One of our staff members, actually, Kay Little, also provided a YouTube video on accessing and filling out some, and clarifying some of the SBA program details. And so it's a great video, so I encourage people to also take a look at that as well. That kind of walks them through and demystifies a few of those, those questions that folks may have. Kimberly, I don't know if you would like to add something?
Well, I just would, yeah, I would echo that we are working with our partners in the Inclusive Business Resource Network with a Small Business Development Center. in the Inclusive Business Resource Network with a Small Business Development Center to make sure that people are aware and can be walked through the application process. As you mentioned, Francesca, it's an intensive process. And particularly if English is not your preferred language, that is, can present a additional challenge. So I would say that we are in the process of figuring out how to improve supports. We've appreciated the resources that OCF has put towards some of the community development financial institutions to make sure that they don't have to lay off staff at a time where they've never been more important in order to support small businesses. And we have put in place a hotline so that if businesses have questions, that they have somebody that they can talk to, to navigate to resources. But certainly, I think we've been hearing a number of, there are a number of people for whom the federal resources, or a number of businesses for whom the federal resources are very helpful. There are other businesses, particularly in industries, that have had to lay off all of their employees where the payroll protection program is not necessarily working as well. So I think we're in that middle of trying to figure out how to, or trying to learn what is working, what's not working, and where we can plug in within our existing network or build out the network to be really effective partners.
Thanks, Kimberly. This is Peter. I just have some personal experience, having been, you know, through the process of filling out all the loan applications this last week and this week. The, I think the vital pieces of information to communicate to applicants are too, twofold. The first is that the, there's been a subtle but very important rules change recently that allows small businesses to apply and to use both of the major available loan packages to the SBA, the Payment Protection Program and the IDOL, or IDOL loan, the Economic Injury Disaster Loan. Previously, the communication had been that businesses could not use both. But the SBA has changed that recently and is now allowing businesses to use both as long as they are used for different purposes or for different categories of expenses. So I think that's a very important piece of information because I know, again, there's a widespread understanding from prior communications by the SBA that you couldn't apply, or you could apply for both, but you couldn't accept both loans. I think the second really important communication and lesson that we're learning now that extends beyond the timetable of the pandemic is the absolutely vital nature of banking relationships. The PPP, for example, is administered exclusively by the banks, as opposed to the IDOL loan, which goes directly to the SBA. Most banks have, for obvious reasons in terms of oversubscription, have chosen to focus only on existing clients. So if you don't have a line of credit or a loan or even a credit card with your bank, you may have a deposit, but if you have no prior lending history with your local bank, they are often denying assistance because they're already overwhelmed, which leaves out a lot of small businesses who may have been cash-only mom-and-pop type of places. So going forward, I think that's something that we're going to have to work on and figure out how best to strengthen our working relationship with local banks. And it's an interesting opportunity to begin to do that work or to accelerate that work. I've made a similar point to the Business Chamber that Andina belongs to, Business for Better Portland. And it's something that I think they're starting to take seriously now. It's a challenge, of course, because, you know, banks are obviously in competition with each other. It's oftentimes hard to coordinate, you know, those types of relationships amongst the different banks. But I do feel in circumstances like these, it shows just how important navigating and solidifying those banking relationships are for small businesses because they are, in these circumstances, really our best bet. So I would encourage us to, you know, as much as I deeply appreciate and respect and admire the work that's being done to confront the short-term issues, that we shouldn't lose sight of some of these long-term systemic issues that we're going to have to continue to deal with.
Oh, you're on mute, Chair Cruz.
Thank you. Any other comments? Questions?
No, just want to say.
I couldn't quite hear that.
Oh, I said, I just simply wanted to thank you. There's been a lot of, one of the things that I've just been reminding folks of in this process, and I really appreciate Prosper Portland, I sent an email response to just let you all know that I see you and see how hard you're working. And I think that, you know, we're in a time where a lot of folks feel like things are sort of falling apart and those things sort of seem loud. But I've also been trying to remind people that things are also coming together. And the things that are coming together tend to be quieter. But in this way, this is a representation of some of the things that are coming together. So I just want to say thank you and keep up the good work.
Great. Thank you. All right. If there are no other comments, then I would accept a motion to approve Resolution Number 7364, revising the Small Business Relief Guidelines.
So moved.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
No opposed? Okay. All right. Thanks very much then.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you, Amy. All right. Next up is item number seven. This is approving the terms of a development agreement and ground lease with Beam Construction and Management for the Prosper Portland owned parcel between Southeast Taylor, Southeast Water and Southeast Salmon Streets, and exclusive negotiating rights for two Prosper Portland owned parcels between Southeast Salmon and Southeast Madison, Central Eastside Tax Incompliment Financing District. And Thea Monchel will present on this. Thea, are you there?
I am there. Can you hear me?
Great. I can hear you now.
Sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to read my slide notes while also being with you guys. Can I? So, sorry, I'm having a little difficulty with that, but I will figure it out. Okay. So thank you all. Justin has my video off, so we can move forward like this, but it's fine either way. At first, I want to thank you all for being here today and for being, for working with me through the ODOT blocks, ground lease terms with Beam Development. We, okay, sorry. Here we go. Okay. So my name is Thea Monchel. I'm a project manager at Prosper Portland. I work in the Development and Investment Department. And I am bringing to you two, a development project in the Central Eastside that we've been calling the ODOT blocks. And we've been working over the past year and a half to advance terms for the ground lease and the development agreement for that project. So we are here today to present to you those terms and to get your authorization to move that into and work with Kimberly and staff to advance that through to a development agreement and ground lease. Next slide. Today, we are asking you to authorize Executive Director to negotiate and execute a development and ground lease with Beam Construction on terms substantially consistent with those presented to you today. This action is preceded by several years of work led by Prosper Portland staff, much of which predates even our July 2017 acquisition of the project site from the Oregon Department of Transportation. Later that year, staff issued an RFP to identify a qualified development partner for the ODOT blocks, ultimately selecting a team led by Beam and including Colas Construction, a Portland-based minority-owned general contractor. On November 1st, 2018, Prosper Portland and Beam signed a memorandum of understanding. Since then, the developer has refined their conceptual program for the site, resulting in what they are calling Workshop Blocks. This project is planned for development in three phases over the course of the next seven years. Each phase will be designed and tenanted with a focus on different but complementary creative industry clusters for film and digital enterprises to food manufacturing and craft industries. These industrial office-type uses will sit side by side within the Central Eastside District and with traditional industrial uses and provide an opportunity for cross-industry exchange inefficiencies. Next slide. The redevelopment of the ODOT blocks property aligns with the Prosper Portland strategic plan in the following ways. It creates opportunities for quality jobs. The proposed development plan expands employment opportunities within the development of a mixed-use industrial office space that will provide opportunities for quality jobs, that will foster inclusive innovation and entrepreneurship ecosystem, and support workforce development. This project will also help to build a vibrant neighborhood and community. The redevelopment of the long vacant three blocks includes a multi-story mixed-use building that provides employment and services in the heart of the Central Eastside Tiff District. Next slide. Through Portland's history, the Central Eastside has seen the face of industry change and diverse, which has changed and diversified while also maintaining an industrial focus. Today, the area is home to more than 1,100 businesses and 18,000 jobs, more than any other district in the central city outside of the downtown core. Many of those jobs are family wage jobs. Based on regional, citywide and Central Eastside job growth trends, it is estimated that the Central Eastside employment will grow by over 9,000 jobs by 2035. And to support that growth, the city has developed goals around enhancing the Central Eastside as a close unemployment center and which Prosper Portland acquired the vacant site from the ODOT department, well, the Oregon Department of Transportation, and began the process of recruiting a development partner. The development of these three vacant blocks will support job growth in the district and the Portland region as a whole. Next slide. So taking a cue from the industries that are already thriving in the Central Eastside, Beam Development created a program for workshop blocks that will curate a targeted industry cluster in each building through a dynamic ground floor program. So what you'll see here is Block A is programmed to be an inclusive technology cluster. And in that programming, you will see a ground floor technology-focused innovation center, retail and possible onsite daycare. The upper floors of the building will house approximately 100,000 square feet of industrial office workspace. And the project would include one level of low-ground structure parking. Block B is a creative production industry cluster. This will see a mix of make/sell studio space and arts-based nonprofits on the ground floor. The upper floors will again house industrial office and there will be one layer of underground parking. Block C is intended to be a food and beverage industry cluster. The ground floor will have focused companies that create a must-see destination for the community to experience innovative food and beverage production and retail. The upper floors, again, are office, are industrial office and will have structured parking as well. Next slide. The term sheet before you today includes a 99-year ground lease on Block A with the option for the developer to purchase in year 20 and again in year 30. This negotiated structure creates both a long-term revenue stream to Prosper Portland and flexibility to Beam to better attract regional financing for their development project. Staff anticipates that construction on Block A will begin in 2022 and completed in 2023. The terms for Block B and Block C are yet to be determined and still several years out. The current terms provide the developer with exclusive development rights on Block B and Block C. Additional pre-development is required before determining the ground lease payment structure for these phases. And as that work advances, we will come back to the board for your approval. It is anticipated that all three blocks will complete construction by 2027. Next slide. So as part of our pre-development work with Beam, they hosted two industry-focused sets of meetings to inform how to increase workforce blocks equity outcomes, both during construction and operations. The construction and workforce meeting group held three meetings with members of the general contractor, minority-owned small business subcontractors, National Association of Minority Contractors Oregon, workforce development professionals and the project architects. And through these meetings, we explored ways in which the material and products identified in the architectural specifications impact the ability of minority-owned subcontractors to respond to invitations to bid. We also held meetings with the Small Business Development Working Group. This group met two times and it included professionals from Autodesk, Puppet and Uncor'd to explore ways to inform the architecture and space needs that support equity outcomes in the ongoing operations. The conversations focused on amenities that would support equity and technology, including a range of space sizes and lease structures, which will allow for businesses to grow and scale, onsite daycare, mentoring opportunities, as well as workforce training. Next slide. Prosper Portland and Beam have been planning the redevelopment of the ODOT blocks with an intentional focus on ensuring optimization of equity opportunities, and which includes the lessons learned through the community engagement working groups. Beam is a member of Portland Means Progress, an initiative that provides connections for businesses to hire local underrepresented students, purchase from businesses owned by people of color and create diverse and vibrant workforce and company cultures. And finally, workshop blocks will be subject to Prosper Portland's business and workforce programs and the agency's green building policy. Next slide. This transaction is largely a market-based transaction and will result in an ongoing stream of income to the agency. Staff have structured the ground lease terms to provide a 6% return on Prosper Portland's investment, which is consistent with the agency's financial sustainability plan and the ODOT's block property plan and characterization as a mission-related investment. But said, there are also known environmental conditions on Block A that require soil removal. Prosper Portland will provide up to $725,000 in funds, which will come from the Central Eastside Tiff budget, which has sufficient resources available for this use. I think that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have at this time.
Chair Cruz, I believe we also have some invited testimony from Beam Development. Jonathan Molson should be on the line.
Yes, I'm here, in my guest room. How are you guys?
Chair Cruz, you're on mute.
Can you guys, can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Welcome, Jonathan. Good to have you.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioners, for having us. I guess I would take this opportunity just to quickly kind of reflect on what we've been going through the last few weeks. You know, in the blocks immediately adjacent to the ODOT blocks, we have, or what we're calling the Workshop Blocks, we have two buildings, the East Bank Commerce Center and Water Avenue, where we have about 75 small businesses. And it's been a really intense few weeks. A lot of our tenants are really suffering. And, you know, it feels like our focus has truly shifted to what we're calling triage to help support our restaurateurs and small marketing firms and small retailers and small office users that are all being really impacted. So a big focus of our work these last few weeks has been, have been conversations, really tough conversations with a lot of our tenants about the support that they need to survive. And it's a truly trying time. So it's, yeah, our heart goes out to our small business tenants. And, yeah, so we're working with them. We're going to continue to work with them. And everything that Prosper is doing is really appreciated. And, you know, in addition to trying to provide near-term rent relief to as many tenants as we possibly can while still servicing our debt, we're helping those tenants navigate the loan programs that are coming up through the CARES Act and elsewhere so that they can weather this storm. And so we remain optimistic that we will get through this downturn, recession. We don't really know how long it's going to last. But as soon as we get through it, we're, you know, really excited to, you know, shift our focus to designing a really innovative project at the Workshop Blocks. Our plan is to focus primarily on Block A first, and that's what we're negotiating the specific deal terms on that are included in the term sheet that you guys are approving today. Our plan is to focus primarily on block A first, and that's what we're negotiating the specific deal terms on that are included in the term sheet that you guys are approving today. We feel like this. Project is a natural extension of the, of the work that we're really proud of that we've done. In the Central East Side for, you know, over twenty years, we had a successful partnership with Prosper Portland and I think we were really. Achieved what we set out to achieve at the Burnside Bridgehead with the East Side Exchange. That was proved to be a really catalytic project for a node of development that has, you know, blossomed into both creative workspace. But also dense residential development. Obviously here at the workshop blocks, we're subject to a different zoning than the Burnside Bridgehead, so it's, we're in a general industrial zone, so we're limited. To industrial office space, which is essentially considered the highest and best use for. That zone, so we're focused on continuing to deliver, I think, innovative office space. We just. Completed thankfully prior to what feels like a meltdown. The district office project, which is our first cross laminated timber office project and we intend to. Continue with that type of work and design, engineer and build cross laminated timber office buildings here. At the workshop blocks. And so, yeah, we have, I think we have a really great team with Hacker Architects and Colas Construction. I think we have a really good strategy for both achieving near term equity results and when we say near term, we talk about, we're thinking more in terms of during construction. And then over the long term, I think we have a really good track record both of, of. Making it work to fill buildings, even if they're new construction at a higher price point with small businesses. We're certainly, you know, recognizing that that takes a little bit more effort and it takes some credibility with lenders and investors to be able to maintain. Stable rent rolls with small businesses, but we've done that over the years and I think we have that track record to deliver. And so I think that's a really important component of building an equitable project. We also intend on programming one of the floors in block A to be. Kind of what everybody would call coworking, but what we call flex workspace. So smaller spaces that are built out and ready for users without any tenant improvement. Negotiation or longer term lease being required. So doing one floor of that and then I think most importantly, our goal is to have a. Kind of a programmatic anchor on the ground floor is what we're kind of calling an innovation center. And the goal of that innovation center would be to partner with a nonprofit or consortium of nonprofits. That would be kind of, you know, kind of a mix of educational opportunities, event space and programming that would create. You know, career pathways for people from historically disadvantaged communities to plug into. What we hope will be the amazing work that's happening on the upper floors anchored by the types of tenants that already occupy our buildings. So whether they're technology companies, design agencies. Or the like, I think that there needs to be more opportunities for folks. From historically disadvantaged communities to work in proximity to the types of businesses that are really flourishing in the Central East Side. And so that's our goal and we're excited to work not only with Prosper's development staff, but also the economic development team to identify. Those partners that will help us anchor that program. I think that's what I have for now. If you guys have any questions, we're happy to answer and my colleague Jesse Ledesma has also joined, I believe, so.
Great, that's, thanks very much for that. That's really exciting and great, great information. Can you just speculate a little bit about the types of nonprofits that you might have? Do you have anybody or is it, is it appropriate now to suggest? Who those folks might be?
Yeah, well, I mean, we've, you know, site control is always very important before you can have really serious conversations. And that's why we've been anxious to progress this conversation, you know, this deal forward. Without raising expectations on timing too much, but yeah, I mean, you know, the innovation quadrant is one of those ideas that are out there. That, you know, would have some partnership with the major educational institutions here in Portland. It would be a dream if the innovation quadrant could coalesce around kind of an actionable agenda and they could be a part. Of the consortium of nonprofits that would anchor this program. We've also had conversations with, with TAO that already has a lot of really great programming. TAO has expressed interest, Pi has expressed interest, so folks like that that are already doing the work.
Sounds good.
Jonathan, this is, this is, this is Peter Commissioner Platt. I'm, I'm putting on my Hacienda hat here. Hacienda has a four million four year grant right now with Verizon. To specifically put together tech training centers for. Underprivileged folks and so this, it sounds like could fit within both the timeline and the. And the parameters that you've already discussed. I'm happy to follow up offline so you can learn more about that.
That would be great. Thank you, Peter.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a quick comment that it's just encouraging to hear about the work you're doing to support your, your current tenants and also just to see that you guys are. Taking the long view here and pushing forward on, on a development project, knowing that, that the short term is hard to, hard to see through the fog right now, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any, any other comments or questions? Okay, well, hearing none, then would someone like to make a motion to approve? Resolution number seven, three, six, five for the term sheet and related matters with respect to the ODOT blocks.
So moved?
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any, any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Thanks very much Jonathan for bringing this, really appreciate your work.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Thea, yep. Okay. All right. Next item is item number eight. And this is approving funding for improvements to the Prosper Portland owned retail space within the Halsey one oh six project. And the Gateway Regional Transit Center increment financing district. Resolution number seven, three, six, six and Thea Munchel will again join us. Hi Thea.
Hi, thank you. This is another one of my projects that I've been working on for the past couple of years or year and a half or so now. So thank you all for being here today. And for considering this item as before you today for the Halsey one oh six development in the Gateway Regional Tiff District. I'm a, again, I'm a project manager here at Prosper Portland and will be reviewing progress today on. The development at Gateway Discovery Park that we're calling Halsey one oh six. Will, I'll introduce you to the item that you'll be authorizing today in regards to the ground floor commercial space owned by Prosper Portland. And how this project aligns with our strategic plan, the financing for the project and the future enrollment in the Affordable Commercial Tenant Program. Next slide. So again, we'll be authorizing today the funding for the build out of the ground floor commercial space at Halsey one oh six. Next slide. This action delivers on multiple strategic plan objectives, most notably by creating vibrant communities and corridors. Providing wealth creation opportunities for business owners and delivering affordability and neighborhood solutions in a rapidly changing mixed use community. Sorry. The Gateway Action Plan emphasized the creation of a vibrant and active Halsey Widler Business District that is well connected to the Gateway Transit Center. The Halsey one oh six development site was specifically identified in the plan as a publicly, publicly owned site with the development potential that would add vibrancy to the Halsey Widler Business District. Through high qualities design and an active ground floor use and a range of housing incomes. As mentioned, this development project fulfills an action item in the Gateway Action Plan. It leverages great partnerships like Portland Parks and Recreation, the Portland Housing Bureau. And private partners. The ground floor commercial space will be programmed through our Affordable Commercial Pilot Program. To support businesses and expand opportunity for prosperity to traditionally underrepresented members of our community. Next slide. This rendering shows Halsey one oh six from the northeast. In the foreground, you see the plaza at Gateway Discovery Park and Halsey one oh six, including the Prosper Portland. Owned ground floor commercial space that opens onto the plaza at Gateway Discovery Park and how it extends down northeast Halsey Street. Halsey one oh six is a thirty three million dollar six story mixed use mixed income project from Human Solutions in Garding Eadlin. The project will create fifty two units of affordable housing, twenty three units of market rate housing. And eleven thousand square feet of office, which will be the new headquarters for Human Solutions and eleven thousand square feet of ground floor commercial space. In July twenty nineteen, the real estate disposition and funding associated with the construction of the Halsey one oh six was approved by the board. Shortly thereafter, project construction began at Halsey one oh six. Currently, the project is thirty five percent complete and on schedule for March twenty twenty one completion. And as a note here, just wanted to highlight the great work that the team has been doing at a time of emergency and the. Safety precautions that are being used on site by, by all of the workers. We're really. Excited to keep the project moving forward, but also really want to do so with safety in mind. And they're also doing a good job of keeping us up to date on how any of the changes that are occurring. Both at the city operation levels with permitting and inspections as well as at the state level with. With just different. Things related to the COVID emergency and so they've been really communicative and advancing a project as best they can and keeping everything on schedule. The residential and office portions of the project are in budget. And today we are seeking funding approval to improve the delivery conditions of the ground floor commercial space. From the basic core shell previously approved and funded. By authorizing this request, staff will be able to work to fully develop the spaces through to occupancy. The budget provides for all associated hard and soft costs that will advance the space from core shell to fully tenanted spaces ready and open for business. These improvements support many of the lessons that we've learned to date through the Affordable Commercial Tenancy Pilot. And are recommended by our retail advisory consultant. Next slide. So the ground floor, okay, so the commercial spaces at Halsey one oh six. There will be up to nine spaces. Spaces will range in size from six hundred and seventy eight square feet to one thousand four hundred and six square feet. We are seeking two full service restaurants to anchor the ground floor. And the design of the building creates the condition where three of the retail spaces enter directly from the plaza at the park while six other spaces would enter from the northeast Halsey Street. Next slide. Okay, I've also been working with the Retail Advisory Committee, which is composed of a diverse group. Including representation from Portland Parks and Recreation, neighborhood stakeholders and business owners to establish. Recommendations for Prosper Portland staff to consider in pursuing ground floor tenants. Engagement provided the opportunity to better inform participants about our Affordable Commercial Tenant Pilot Program. And how our equity lens would interact and support neighborhood priorities. And what we have learned at these meetings. Includes. Creating active destination businesses that serve the economic and racially diverse community of Gateway. To recruit, recruit for businesses that contribute to the vibrancy of the Halsey Widler Business District and Gateway Discovery Park. And that we really have a preference for restaurant, retail and personal services. With the equity lens of the Affordable Commercial Tenancy Pilot, these businesses are anticipated to be owned by people of color, on time residents of Gateway in East Portland and women. Next slide. So this is our fourth project in the Affordable Commercial Tenant Pilot Program. And through this piloting program, we have learned a number of lessons from the projects that came before and we're really looking to apply those lessons to this project. So one of the things that we've really learned is that the design permitting and construction. Of a project that's at a core shell delivery condition provides enough uncertainty. To our small businesses around what out of pocket expenses might be and the timeline associated with. Design and construction that just create enough of a barrier that we're not really able to attract the businesses that we're seeking to serve. So what we're doing is incorporating some of the lessons from ten Y and looking to further build out the core shell to more of a warm shell condition or a trades ready. Trades permit ready level. So in addition to. To that, we are also requesting the forty dollars a square foot tenant improvement allowance, which is our ACT grant. That would be a part of the program for this building. Next slide. So in total, we're asking for three point five million dollars in increased funding. This provides approximately a hundred and eighty dollars a square foot for the hard cost associated with landlord work. This puts us just over the hundred and twenty dollars a square foot that we're seeing. And costs associated right now at Lenz Commons and that increase will give us some addition, some. Escalation associated with the cost of construction, but also gives us the opportunity to. Further build out and provide the infrastructure related to developing a restaurant space, so the infrastructure pieces that would stay with the building. Could also be financed through our landlord work. So while this is a sizable investment and carries the, a risk associated with owning and managing the ground floor commercial space. The Gateway Market to date has had a very low vacancy rate. And so these spaces, we're thinking we can get mid teens to a low twenties price per square foot. And combining this with our wraparound services of IBRN. And our tenant improvement allowance provided through the ACT program. We think this will be a really great project for the Gateway District. Next slide. So right now we're in phase one of this project where the core shell is under construction and we've met with the Retail Advisory Committee. Our next step in this phase is to really begin the marketing of the project. And that marketing will draw on what we've learned through the Retail Advisor Committee meetings. And the next phase will begin once we have the building turned over to us from the general contractor. Which will occur and is set to occur anyways in March twenty twenty one. At that time, we'll really be able to advance the landlord work and provide those warm shell trades ready permit spaces that we're looking for for our, the tenants. And then really deeply engage in leasing process and complete the tenant improvements at that time. And from then on, we'll be working with our asset investment team to, to do our operations of the project. And that is my presentation. If you have any questions.
Any questions or comments? Well, sounds great.
Sorry, sister interest. Can you go back to the budget slide and just talk through each of those line items again, like what, yeah, the distinction landlord work versus the tenant improvements?
Sure, so the landlord work will include. Providing all of the, of the building infrastructure pieces, all the plumbing. The electric, not necessarily the electric finishes, the specific tenants lighting, but. All of the other infrastructure up to that point that you would need, need in a building to get a tenant open and operating. And then our ACT grant. Is a forty dollars per square foot grant that. Is a, is a part of our Affordable Commercial Tenant Pilot Program. So that here, we have about eleven thousand square feet of space, so that's coming out to about four hundred and forty thousand dollars. We have a, an amount of hard cost contingency. And then we also have the soft costs, which will include architecture fees, permitting, brokerage fees, marketing and some additional consultant services related to attracting. And working with the businesses that we're looking to serve this program.
And so will that landlord work be done? Prior to identifying the specific tenants or what's the strategy there?
We have a, we have a couple of different spaces that will come in different delivery conditions, so we have. Two restaurant spaces that we've designed to be a little bit flexible in their size allocation. We're really. We've made the accommodation that those spaces could be really tight. And up to about fourteen hundred square feet, but they also have a little. and up to about 1,400 square feet, but they also have a little flexibility to go up to around 2,000 square feet. So the two anchoring restaurants have a little bit of flexibility. We have two spaces that we'd move right away into the trades permit warm shell. So those will be more turnkey-ready spaces where tenants could come in, update some lighting fixtures, and build out their specific retail operation within that space. And then we have the spaces along the park, which we'll kind of do some early marketing with while the building is under construction and make that determination of whether or not that space can be rented as one large space that really has a different relationship to the park or whether that will end up being three smaller retail spaces. So it's designed right now to be a little bit dynamic, but as we get closer to the turnover date from the contractor to have more specificity and learnings from the market space as we just get closer to those times. So we have a mix of options depending on just kind of whether it's a restaurant or retail and then how that and how spaces are going to interact with the park. And I left that space flexible with the idea that the park space has some challenges associated with its marketability. There Halsey Street's a one-way street, and so it's going to be really hard to get the visibility that you'd really want for a successful retail space within the park. And a lot of a lot of park users and people coming to the park are necessarily also coming to shop. So we're looking really to kind of better explore that relationship to that space and to the park to really make an informed decision on what we're hearing in the marketplace before we dig too deep into that.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? I guess one thought I was having was, you know, given our kind of difficult, you know, rocky situation net right now from a leasing standpoint, do we have kind of a strategy to maybe do some temporary uses or something like that? Just to activate the space a little bit while the market settles down? Because it might be tough to attract two, you know, high-caliber restaurants now in the next two years to that space, given what's happening in the market right now.
Yeah, absolutely. Good point. I, one of the advantages I see in delivering two of the spaces as turnkey spaces is they would have that opportunity to be either pop-up for local businesses or places for community-based events. I'm also looking at that with the space along the park. I know that 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 could be a great community gathering space, partnership with the park, so long as they're not leased. So I'm really trying to advance this project so it's flexible to those needs, but also really wanting to promote and push this for serving businesses first and then communities second, and really not wanting it to sit vacant and during, you know, especially adjacent to the park. So looking at all those ways to be symbiotic with the park and the neighborhood and push for activation in small and large scales, yes.
Great, thank you. That facility has a neat feel to it. I've walked around out there and I liked it.
It's a really great park and very well-attended and beloved by the community. It's a great asset.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? All right, well, hearing none, would someone like to make a resolution to adopt? Excuse me, I don't have the resolution number in front of me. It is seven three six six. Anyone like to make a resolution? Or excuse me, a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Great, thank you so much. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Great, thanks, and no opponents, I assume, so it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thanks for your great work, Thea.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, next up, we have
Marlon Kapulia looked like you were talking. I'm not sure.
All right, so next we have item number nine. This is adopting Budget Amendment Number Three for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019 and ending July 30, 2020, and making appropriations. And Tony Barnes will report.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Random, Tony Barnes, Finance Manager, Prosper Portland, and I'll be presenting Resolution 7367, which is the third Budget Amendment for fiscal year 1920. Next slide, please. The purpose of the revision is to amend the budget to include resources being provided by the City of Portland General Fund and Prosper Portland to fund the Small Business Relief Fund and support the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative Districts. The amendment recognizes $1 million added to Prosper Portland's General Fund to support the fund and appropriates expenditures of Prosper Portland's General Fund, Enterprise Zone, and Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative Funds. Next slide, please. Total changes to the FY 2019-20 budget. It's $2.6 million to Economic Development Appropriations, with $1.6 million coming from the Enterprise Zone and Neighborhood Prosperity Contingency Funds. The balance, $1 million, is the $1 million from the City of Portland that's received. Next slide, please. Total changes specific to the Small Business Relief Fund equal $2.3 million, including $1 million from the City General Fund for the grant program, $1 million in Enterprise Zone resources for the loan program, and $300,000 in Enterprise Zone contingency to fund the Apono Grant, as well as administrative support to our CDFI disbursement partners for the partnership in dispersing the grant and loan funds. And the next slide, please. And finally, the $320,000 increase to the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative Districts. Each will amend each district's operating grant to provide at least $50,000, approximately $50,000 in additional operating support. Once a program plan is approved by Prosper Portland, the funds from this amendment will be used to offset organizational expenses, provide support to business operations, and rent subsidies, as well as provide assistance to support community residents. These are underway right now. One example, one of the grants, for example, in the Rosewood, will be using the funds to contract with local restaurants to provide meals several nights a week to shelters serving East Portland families for a period of approximately 12 weeks. So more of these amendments are underway. And that concludes presentation on the on the Budget Amendment. I'm happy to take any questions on it.
Do you have any questions or comments from anybody? No? All right, would someone like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Seven Three Six Seven?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
No opposed, I assume, so it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Well, is there, are there any other items to discuss? Okay, all right then. The Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting for April 8, 2020 is now adjourned. Thanks to everybody for participating and thanks to all of your great work, given these very difficult circumstances.
Thanks, Chair Cruz.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks very much. Okay.